I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the Manona City Council for May 15th, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Moore? Here. Alder Kitzler?
Here.
Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Spate?
Here.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Alder Holmquist is excused. Or may be arriving late.
Maybe arriving late, right. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 1st, 2017, meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, changes, additions? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have one appearance tonight. Robert Hyatt would like to speak on the issue of parks and dog access. If you could please come over here to speak.
Since I was requested to be here tonight, anyway, I figured it'd make it a twofer. There's been an increasing amount of, in an odd plan, where it's hit-and-run traffic on Oneida Park where I live, and I wasn't quite sure why, but I have it on reliable authority that the Parks Commission, where I was first going to take this issue, has already been through this issue, and the city council seemed fit to over-recommend some of the recommendations about dogs in city parks. Oneida Park used to be a dog-free zone, now it's not, apparently, and increasingly, people see this as a place to come and let their dogs do their business in my yard. I have the only willow tree in the park. My wife is a kidney transplant recipient, she's immunosuppressed, and that's why I brought this sheet for you, is to just give you an informational update on 20 serious diseases that are transmissible from dogs to humans. And I have no recourse now, that the city council found it acceptable to let people bring dogs into the parks. I can do nothing now to stop these people who decided that not only can they bring their dogs into the park leashed, but now they can let them run unleashed, which I understand is not allowed. So I just thought I'd bring this for your information only, and perhaps maybe you'll rethink your decision on allowing dogs in parks. Just, there's some pretty, especially with the warnings about a lot of the tick transmissible diseases that are on the rise, especially in Wisconsin, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item F, Consent Agenda. Items 1 through 3 include, number 1, approval of renewal applications for 2017-2018 operator licenses; number 2, approval of application for 2017-2019 operator license; and number 3, approval of renewal application for 2017-2019 operator license. Is there a motion to approve?
Move it.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda's approved. Move on to council action items. Number 1A, consideration of Resolution 17-5-2178, award of bid for 2017 street resurfacing project. This is put forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, okay. Mr. Stefani?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the information as far as the resurfacing bid award. The Public Works Committee did approve the bid award at the May 3 meeting. Prior to the meeting, I did hand out an updated fiscal note, just a further breakdown, the street maintenance account and the expenses that we have approved to date, and then the upcoming remaining work that we're going to be doing. I did get the Winnicott Road pavement marking completed. I reported at the last meeting that that was something we were looking into. We had some really good prices come in our way, so we did get that work done. Other than that, there's no new information to present, so be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I think this is the clerk, please call the roll.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 1B, consideration of Resolution 17-5-2179, approval of Bird City, Wisconsin application, Alders Wood and Spate. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Alders Wood and Spate, did you have any?
I think we discussed this last time, there have really been any changes since then. I did hand out a pamphlet from the Bird City, Wisconsin program or organization. I think they made their way down there, so be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Any further discussion or questions?
I'm here.
Attorney Cole?
Mayor, you had asked the last meeting about ordinances regarding animals of large. We do have ordinances on the books, it's 7-1-6, calls for a penalty of $30 for a first violation, $50 for a second, $10 for a third violation. So we do have that.
Okay. So this deals with cats that are, are marrying? Is regarding this?
Yes, in our ordinance, we have that.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of becoming a bird city, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now we are on to the hot topic of the evening. Item 1C, consideration of Resolution 17-5-2180, appointing an interim alderperson. First of all, I would like to announce that Alderman, former Alderman Kathy Thomas, has withdrawn her application. I think we discussed, Attorney Cole, if you would just confirm this, should we start with nominations, or do we do this in a particular order?
Yeah, I would suggest, I did hand out just now the outline that I believe was agreed to at the last meeting. I would just note two, I guess, additions I added into it. I just added in sections of permitting discussion after each, within each round. I assume that's what the pleasure of the council was, even though we didn't specifically talk about it. And then I added number 8 at the bottom, which would be, in the case of any tie, at any stage, it would be broken by the mayor. I just thought we should have something in there in case we are irretrievably broken or tied as a council, there was some way to extricate us from that predicament. Other than that, the process is as was it laid out last time. I would suggest, I think, right now would be the time to just entertain nominations from any of the individual alders.
Alder Wood?
Before we do that, I was just wondering if we have an idea of if Alder Holmquist is going to be here, or when?
He's not sure. It's a situation with his job with the school district, and he said he doesn't know at this point if he's going to be able to make it or not. So if you'd like, we could push this back to the end. See if he's here, would you like to do that?
I think it's only fair that we do that.
Okay. Is that okay with?
Agree.
Do we have to vote on that?
No.
Okay, sorry. Have to wait a little longer. All right, we will move on to new business. New business, item A, consideration of Resolution 17-5-2181, allowing beer sales by Parks and Recreation staff during special events. Parks and Recreation Board, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connor and council. So this item was, been talked about at the Park and Rec Board level for several years now with the master planning of Winnicott Park and the idea of a beer garden. Milwaukee County Park has many of them. City of Madison just recently approved one that will be opening this year with the help of city clerk Joan Andrews. And Attorney Cole looked at exemption in the state statute that allows municipalities to sell fermented malt beverages, as long as it's by city staff and approved at the council. So this would be a trial period of sorts to sell beer by Park and Rec staff at the four concerts in the park and our food cart cinema night. These are limited-term events in length, and a lot of the informal feedback that we've received at these events is we have great music and great food, different food carts, and, you know, you certainly welcome to bring your own alcohol, beer, or wine, or liquor into the park, but having an option that we could sell it as well would be desired. The proceeds from this would be a fundraiser for our Bridge Road Park Playground project, and then we'll see how, reevaluate it after this year, and see if it was popular, whether it was needed, want to do it again, bigger or smaller scale.
Move to take this item out of order? Right, start for action.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was start.
It was start and error.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Does anyone want to bring the motion?
Uh, no, I'll hold it.
First, and then?
Yeah.
Sure. Alder Wood?
License Review Committee took this proposal up last week at our, at our meeting. There were actually, we had asked Detective Losby to contact CivMIC because they have frequent interaction with CivMIC, our insurance, liability insurance company. However, I see he did that right away, so we do have that information in here. The first concert's not till June 19th.
Correct.
So I don't think there's really a need to take it out of order unless?
Well, for securing sponsorship, it would be beneficial if we could discuss it and potentially get approval tonight. So we'd be looking at potential sponsors for the purchase of the beer through a distributorship, then basically every dollar that we get for the beer is profit.
So what is, what is the will of the council? Has everyone looked at page 47, these, the comments from CivMIC?
Seeing that, I will put back on the table to take this item out of order.
I'll second.
All in favor to take this item out of order?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 17-5-2181?
Move to approve.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Okay. Any comments? Alder Wood?
Just wanted to note that we, License Review did make a couple of changes to the resolution that came before us, so it's a little bit different, I think, than what Parks Board or, we changed whatever, what we got, basically to?
I agree with all of 15 minutes. Let's see if there's a question or if we can, or if we have some questions to check out. Thank you.
Let's see. I believe in the second, the be it further resolved clause, paragraph, requiring all individuals selling alcohol should be, will be 21 years of age. I think that was new. Okay. And that the employees selling it must take and successfully complete the alcohol awareness course required of all licensed operators, and also have a police background check, which is standard procedure for anybody getting a bartender's license. So basically, although we can't actually issue the operators' licenses to city employees to sell beer in city parks, you know, it's a policy matter, we can set the same conditions, so, I guess, those are the, the changes. This is a one-year trial, and we, the committee did discuss whether the exception from the fencing requirement and recommended leaving, leaving that exemption in the resolution. The concern we had, or I had, anyway, was, I don't know, there's probably eight or 10 temporary beer licenses that we issue to various organizations in a year, and we've been pretty consistent in requiring fencing for those events. Certainly for some of the larger events, such as the festival or the chili cook-off, I think it would be, you know, be really inappropriate not to have the fencing requirements. Some of the others are maybe more debatable. But anyway, the committee was willing to give it a one-year trial and see, you know, see how it goes. My impression was that if fencing's required, then we won't sell, Jake wouldn't sell beer.
That's correct.
Because this is too much time and labor to?
Correct.
Put the fencing out and take it down. The only other thing I would add, I guess, is the notes from the conversation that Detective Losby had with Tom Mann from CivMIC stating that the city would have, would be subject to paying a $37,500 deductible if the city were successfully sued as a result of, you know, any, the sale of beer in the parks. For example, if an employee gets sued for selling to an underage person who dies in a car crash, or is injured, or injure someone, someone else, that liability potential would exist, and the city has to pay the first 70, $37,500.
Any other comments?
I just have a question, which is, would the city staff or officers be responsible for not only the sale, but also the carding or?
Yes. Correct.
They would be doing both?
Correct.
So there would be multiple staff on, likely, at every event?
Well, at least one to card and, you know, I'm not anticipating a line of like 100 people waiting to buy beers. I, I mean, there'll be, there's three of us in the administrative office that would be, you know, going through the class, and I, my hope is at least two of us would be on, I mean, two of us will always be at the concerts, and?
Right.
One of us will be, you know, selling and checking IDs.
Anything else?
I have a question. How long, are these concerts generally about an hour and a half?
Yeah. Yep, so typically, food cart sales start at about 5:30, concerts start at 6:30, go to 8:00, so we're probably looking at that 5:30 to 8:00 time period.
And how about the movie night?
The movie night would be, you know, maybe like 5:30 to 9:00, because the movie will start at 8:45, but would be, you know, shutting down a little bit early that night.
Okay. Alder Kitzler, would you?
I was just gonna voice my opinion of support for this. I think it's a great idea. I love that it will be helping, you know, the parks program with the Bridge Park. I enjoy that it's a year trial period, because we can kind of guess and check it, and for a conversation later is the fencing, because I would like to take that up with other events as well. But, so I'm glad that there's no fencing here.
Alder Spate?
I'm wondering if Attorney Cole might weigh in on this? I mean?
Can you, can you?
Well, it seems like a pretty high risk to, to take, or to put on the city, unless I'm not understanding something. And I mean, the $37,000 deductible, I, it almost sounds like we're saying that in the event the city is sued, then we pay it, but otherwise, we're, that's when we pay it? Because the minute that happens, this has become a very expensive foray into, you know, beer sales.
Correct. I mean, everything in the memo concerning, the discussion with CivMIC is accurate. That's all laid out correctly. The one thing that's really not in the memo that's probably relevant to this discussion, though, is Wisconsin, as some of you may know, is a drab shop state, meaning there is considerable immunity for people serving alcohol if the people they serve go on and create some tortious act. That's been on the books for a long time. There are some exceptions, to be honest, I didn't look at it, but if memory serves, in order for a server to be liable for the acts of the person they served, they would have to knowingly serve an, an over-served person. Somebody that had too much and they didn't cut them off, and they served them anyway, despite knowing that. I believe then they can be liable, and there may be a couple other rare circumstances. So I think the way it really plays out is, certainly people could sue the city, I mean, that, you know, that could occur, they could sue the city staff, and we would be obliged to defend them. If there was significant potential exposure, I think the decision we would make would be to tender to CivMIC, notwithstanding the retainage, and pay the $37,000. If, on the other hand, it was pretty clear that we were immune, and that there wasn't a lot of exposure, we could choose not to tender to CivMIC, have me just defend the case, and presumably, if it's a case with not a lot of exposure, get it dismissed for considerably less than $37,000. So all of that, I guess, is a way of saying, sure, there's, there's exposure, but I think it's somewhat mitigated by these, these reasons.
Okay. Anything else?
You might have already said this, and I missed it, but is, can you give me an estimate of what the tenants has been? Assuming it's a good?
Sure. Yeah, so concerts in the park, between 350 and 500 is, is what we've been averaging, and the food cart cinema last year was 750. So we're probably looking at 750 to 1,000 people this year. Star Wars Legacy Returns, or Star Wars Awakens is the movie this year, so we'll have a lot of people in Jedi costumes. Lightsabers.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next up is item B, consideration of Resolution 17-5-2182, authorizing the redemption of general obligation refunding bonds dated March 1st, 2007. Mr. Houtacher, is there a motion to take this out of order?
I'll second.
Second. Is there a motion to consider this resolution?
I think we have to vote on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to consider the resolution?
I'll move to consider.
Mr. Houtacher?
I'm kind of gonna reference page 51. I just noticed there's little numbers on the top, so I'll be using 51 as kind of my reference. So basically what this is, we have three years left on our loan for the library. Currently, we're paying a little over 4% of interest on this last three payments. So what I'm proposing to do, what I did is I was trying to figure out ways to save the city money and use some of our balances. What I looked at is our TIF balances. We have TIF 4 through, through 9 on page 51, you'll see what our, our balances are. So basically, we have over $2.6 million in our TIF balances, and we can't refinance everything right now in our TIFs, so we'll eventually do some of that work in the future. But I was saying, we have 2.6 left, we have $675,000 left of callable library bonds. So what I, what I would like to do is take $675,000 out of the TIFs in total, and pay off the loan, and save over three years, $57,000. It's not a big savings, but it is a little bit of a savings. But we still would have to pay that back to the TIFs, so what we end up doing is, on page 51, you see there says current bond amounts, you'll see the principal and interest. And the next thing is a repayment schedule, just shows the principal and no interest. So we'd still levy the principal amount and pay that back over to the TIF to make it whole, because basically what we're doing is we're taking a loan out from the TIF, the TIFs, to the payoff, pay this off, so we had, still have to pay that back. So we're just trying to save $57,000 there of the interest, and we have the balances there. We're earning less than 1% in interest income on those, on those balances, so we're paying 4% interest, or the one, less than 1% of interest income. So to me, save yourself a little bit of interest there. So that, that's kind of what, what the plan wants to do, is to refinance that and get that paid off. There's no penalties right now, because it's callable right now, so there's no penalties, additional interest added on there, so.
This was approved in Finance and Personnel earlier this evening. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, we didn't hear a call.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't hear a call, okay. Little clerk, please call the roll.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder Moore?
Aye.
Alder Kitzler?
Aye.
Motion passes. I did just hear from Alderman Holmquist, he's on his way to Manona, so.
From where?
Yeah, right. Okay, we have one more item. Item C, consideration of ordinance 5-17-687 relating to confidentiality of income and expense records. City clerk, is there a motion to take this out of order?
I'll move.
I'm sorry, who was the second? Who was the third?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there a motion to consider this resolution, this ordinance?
So moved.
City Clerk Andrews?
This was a ordinance, I mean, sorry, a statute change that we needed, we were required us to have an ordinance that if a assessor requests income and, or, you know, revenue statements from a person who's, from an entity that's contesting their assessment, their property assessment, we have to keep those records confidential, and they are not subject to open record request. And we are required to have this ordinance, so it's really just bringing us to statute, statute requirement.
Alder Wood, did you have?
Just, yeah, a comment, a question, I guess. So this would actually only apply to commercial properties, because that's the only property, I think, that you would ever, the assessor would ever use the income method to determine the appropriate assessment?
Yes.
Of a property?
Yes.
I think it could be also rental residential property.
Sure, okay.
But, yeah.
Not, not a private, single-family residence, though?
Correct.
So it seems, anyway, so this, you know, it seems to be a sensible approach to get that information. Just one question I would have for the city attorney. Does this mean, then, that the board of review, in considering this information, would need to go into closed session?
My understanding is that, is all this does is protect the documents. It doesn't necessarily protect the information, although the board of review is required by statute to deliberate in open session. So I don't think they'd be able to go into closed session to, to deliberate this data, nor do I think the ordinance would permit them to do so, or render the data confidential. It would just preclude the public from getting copies of the documents, the financial documents themselves.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Should we take up the appointments?
Sure.
Joan, do, do we need to do these, I can't remember, do we do these separately?
You can do it all at once if you like.
Okay. All right. Item I, number one, to the License Review Committee, effective immediately, John Cleansing, Jim Flasterer. Item two, to the Public Safety Committee, effective immediately, Linda Holsel, Larry Reed. Item three, to the Police and Fire Commission, effective immediately, Steve Brzinski. Item four, to the Senior Citizens Commission, Gwen Feit and Peggy McDonald. Item five, to the Parks and Recreation Board, Pat Howell, Jeff Hins, Jennifer Call and Greg Anderson, all effective immediately until April 30th, 2020. And Karen Torino, effective immediately until April 30th, 2018. And I'm sorry, I should have, should I go back and read the expiration dates of the other ones? Okay. Finally, to the Public Works Committee, Jeff Besch, effective immediately to, through April 30th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm sorry, hold on. Hold on, Alder Spade?
If I could just pose a question before we do this, and it seems to me that most of these people are reappointments.
They are all reappointments.
And so, and I realize that while we give our blessing to this as a council, I just want to ask the question, at what point do we think about trying to bring new faces and new voices into our committees, rather than just as a default, always reappointing people, many of whom have been on these committees for 10, 20, maybe 30 years? I don't want to in any way disparage the dedication to community that a lot of these people bring to this, and it is in no way a personal reflection on any of these individuals. It's just a process question, and it has always struck me as problematic for this city that we have so many people that have literally been on committees forever, to the detriment of the broader public that is changing and looking for us to consider new ideas, but many things come and die in committee and never see the light of day at this council. And so, I just want to raise that question. I mean, I would, I mean, we could, we could reappoint all of these individuals here tonight, but I think we might benefit from having a discussion at the council level as to whether or not that's really how we want to proceed.
I did, when I received these from Administrative Services Director Leah Kimmel, they were on the draft agenda for this meeting, and I asked her about this. I assumed they were all reappointments because none of them had been run by me and the new applications are for new appointments. And she said we could change how we do this. I, Bill, do we have this, this is in ordinances, is there a term, how many time, how many terms someone could be on a committee? Is there anything in the ordinances about that, or is it totally up to?
No, there are no term limits, and as Alder Spade said, many people have served for many years. It's solely within your discretion, Mayor, as to how many terms you would want to appoint them, assuming the council confirmed it.
I did tell her, I would like to think about this, but I don't want to make a big change right now, having been in this for three weeks or whatever. I know years ago, I remember Mayor Medcalf tried instituting, I think it was six years total service on a committee, which I think might be a little short, but I think it's something we should discuss. So, I decided to go ahead and put these out for approval this time, and during the course of the next several months, talk about it. In May, what happens is in May, people whose terms are, are up are, generally are asked if they would like to be reappointed, unless they've been a problem. I think if it's been someone who's missed a lot of meetings or whatever, that's handled differently. So, this is usually the month where we could do the most of this, is the reappointments is in May. Not everybody's term is up the same year, obviously.
If you, some of you might recall, we did have some discussions of this during the recodification process, and I think at the time, we decided, you know, not to go forward with instituting a term limit because in some cases, there may be a long-term serving member that you'd prefer to keep on, on that committee or body, so there wasn't any changes made during the recodification, but we did do some discussion of it. I'm not sure if it was this body or it might have been at the committee level, so.
Yeah, I don't recall discussing that at this body.
Might have been Finance that discussed it.
Okay. I vaguely remember, I mean, we did, we did talk about this at some meeting at some point, and, and I under, I mean, it's one thing to have a blanket policy. I just wanted clarification, and, I mean, it seemed, I know we're always, when we have a vacancy and we're filling those vacancies, that's when this happens throughout the year. And so, that's fine, and obviously, when you're filling a vacancy, then that's always the opportunity to bring in new people. But this is a large group of people, and I realize these people do have to be legally on the committee.
Right.
And we don't want to, it would be hard to go through a process to hold up these individuals, and yet, by approving them all, it just, it kicks the can down the road for years for a number of these individuals. So, that, that's my concern, and I, I don't know how we could expedite a process to try to reapportion, but anyway, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Alder Kitzler, we?
Yeah, I'll just echo in public, you know. I've shared the same sentiments, and, you know, Mayor O'Connor and I have talked about it, and so, you know, I gave her a heads up that I would actually ask that same question, so I appreciate it, and I agree. I think it's something that we have to look at, and I think in light of, you know, everybody's interest, I think it's important that we figure out some sort of process.
So, what do you think about tonight, about the appointments we have here? This is something that I, we all know what's going to cause a big stink, I'm sure. I think we need to discuss it, but I don't want to just jump into it. I want to give it some thoughtful consideration, how we want to handle it. So, I guess, how would you like to handle this group of appointment, or reappointments?
I just have another question as it relates to, since there isn't a statute related to term limits, is there statute related to the exact number of people that can be on any commission? Every single one has a limit.
Right, that is included in the ordinances.
There isn't any flexibility there.
Well, you could always change the order.
Right, and we do occasionally, for various reasons.
I guess what I would be interested to see, and I don't know how difficult it is to put it together, but I'd be interested to see when on each committee, people's terms are up. In other words, if we were to make, let's say that we approve these individuals and their reappointment tonight, and then next year, you know, how many people are going to be up for reappointment? And I ask that question because maybe it's roughly the same amount of people each year, in which case, a change in policy and practice could be deliberated, and now is not the moment to do it, and we're beginning the first month of, you know, a two-year term minimum for your role as mayor, and so, that means that, you know, we could decide to make some change that would be effective next year, when you're in the middle of your term. I mean, it's an awkward and difficult thing when this council has just changed hands, and then we're asked to reapprove all of these legacy appointments. I just, that's what I'm struggling with here, but I, you know, if I, if I felt confident that this, and I do think historically, we have a group like this.
I think you're right, although Park Board seems, this seems like quite a few people for.
It does seem like a lot of people. But I would feel more comfortable reappointing these individuals if I knew a similar group was definitely going to be before us next year.
If I may, speaking of Mayor O'Connor, most committees do have a staggered term, so that you're not replacing an entire committee, just like the council, an entire committee every term. So, yes, there will be similar numbers next year.
Okay.
Alder Wood, did you have?
That's, yeah, basically what I was going to say, I'm not sure why Parks has five this time, but even one of those will be up a year from now. There's only one reappointment for Public Works, so obviously, I would expect that committee will have a number, several on here next year, and this, this also isn't a complete list of all the committees.
Correct.
But, so I, I agree with the sentiment, but I, I'd like to go ahead and approve these tonight and then begin that, you know, process of looking at how do we want to handle committee appointments.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor, I would certainly concur that, you know, I just would echo publicly as well that I share Alder Spade, Alder Mahnhoekwist's view, and, in fact, I give presentations frequently throughout the country in my other work on succession planning, and I start out those presentations by saying there are two, really two things that a leader can give to an organization. One is to serve with distinction, and the second is to plan their exit. Because without, it's, you know, without that, organizations really struggle. So, I would certainly think it would be something that we'd want to continue to discuss in the future and hopefully make some, some changes to it.
And I think this does vary from committee to committee. We have, Library Board's going to have quite a few new people within the last two or three years, so it just, it does vary, but there are others who've had the same members for, I can't imagine how many years, quite a few, so. Is that all right with everybody? So, is there a motion to approve these appointments?
I'll move approval.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointments are approved. Alder Mahnhoekwist has arrived.
Yeah.
He's in the building. So, we will go back to, I'm glad you were able to make it for, for the vote. We'll go back to Item 1C, Consideration of Resolution 17-5-2180, Appointing an Interim Alder Person. I think, should we, Attorney Cole, should we, should we just leave it open for nominations here at this point, or do you want us to go through the council in some particular order?
No, I think, Mayor, the floor could be open for nominations, rather than calling on the alders individually, I think if, because some alders may not want to make a nomination, so I think right now, you can just open the floor to anyone that wishes to make a nomination. Each alder would be entitled to nominate one person.
And each alder may second one candidate as well. Alder Kitzler?
Move to nominate Molly Groupi.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I move to nominate Mark.
I'll second.
Alder Spade?
I'll move to nominate Jennifer Kerr, second.
So, I'll declare the nominations closed, so now we vote on each one individually. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe you would, you would have a vote of the council.
Of and out.
Right, and so, we have five members present right now. So, if any of the three get three votes, they would be the appointed individual.
Okay.
Will we have an opportunity to discuss why?
Yes, I mean, my, I'm sorry, the, ultimately, you're going to get to a vote, but yeah, now would be the time then to discuss the merits of the candidates.
Okay. Would anyone like to speak? Alder, Alder Wood?
Did you want to go first, or?
Oh, no, I'll, I'll let you go first.
Thanks. Actually, I think I would defer to Alder Mahnhoekwist, since we had to play delay until you got here. Just, I just want to make several comments. First of all, we got, when we got 11 applications for this position, I think we were all kind of stunned, but it turned out, you know, it was a good thing, I mean, a very good reflection, and gave, I felt like we had a lot of really good choices, and I think the fact that three, three of the applicants were nominated speaks to that. I think if Alder Thomas, former Alder Thomas, hadn't withdrawn, there'd been a good chance that there might have been a fourth, a fourth nominee. I did want to touch on a couple things, and I already shared this with the council in terms of the precedent and the value of incumbency, which I did, did some research and, which found that, actually, we've only appointed an interim alder two times since 1981. There was an occasion in 1981 where on a, where there were eight applicants, and on a three to two vote, George, I think it was George Sebold, got the appointment, and in 2007, when Alder Cecilick resigned, we filled that position, and then that time, there was a candidate who said they would not, did not intend to run. With regard to the value of incumbency, that was talked about at the previous meeting, and maybe isn't quite as relevant right now, but just very briefly, there have been 20 alder manic elections in Monona since 1998. 10 of those were uncontested, and I think it's either five or six in a row, which may skew our perception somewhat of how often we have contested elections, but anyway, out of the 20, so 10 were uncontested. There was another one where no incumbent ran. Out of the remaining nine, there were at least four candidates, and in each, in six out of the nine times, an incumbent lost. So, well, it's undoubtedly an advantage in some ways to be an incumbent. It's also not a sure thing that you'll get, that you'll win. But getting back more to the, I guess, you know, what we're, the decision we're faced with, or presented with the opportunity for tonight, I'm really pleased with the three nominations that were, were made. I would have been happy to have made any of the three or second any of the three, and I think any of the three would be, will be very fine alders. I've struggled, you know, sort of, over the last couple weeks, trying to sort out, like, how do you, once I kind of got to that conclusion, and then thinking until yesterday that Alder Thomas was still in, in the mix, really was struggling with how do you, you know, how do you choose? It is an uncomfortable position, being up here and making the choice, and it's one thing to go in the ballot box, you know, go in the voting booth and vote for somebody like everybody else. So, it's, just a couple other comments, I guess, the length of time that a candidate has lived in the community, while it's a consideration, that's not a vital one for me. I've told a number of you that when I first ran for the city council, I was on the city council from 1989 to 1993, and when I first ran in 1989, I'd only lived in Monona for about three and a half years. So, that's obviously, from my perspective, not the, not a showstopper by any means. I think involvement in the community is important, preferably with city committees. I know at least one of the nominees has applied for membership on a couple of committees unsuccessfully. It's Jennifer Kerr, and I believe is currently vice president of the newly formed Friends I actually did, I met with, I had lunch with Mark and coffee with Jennifer and Molly, and frankly, in the back of my mind, I was sort of hoping that somebody, they would kind of eliminate themselves, but none of them did. They were, which is, you know, it's a good, a good problem, and I'm going to leave it there.
Alder Spade?
Well, I want to second what Doug said with, on a couple of points. I have told a number of people that in my nine years... a number of people that in my nine years on this council, I have never had, faced a decision that I have found this excruciating. I just haven't. It feels very personal. And of course, it is personal. We're being asked to make a judgment, which typically the voters make. And I applaud all of you who have thrown your hat into the ring. And as I said a few weeks ago, I hope you come back with your 50 signatures and, and I'll even lay down the gauntlet. I mean, I don't want to put this burden on the couple of alders that are going to be up for reelection next year. Some of you can take off a year and come back in two years when, when three of us will be up for reelection. You know, alders, well, the three of us have not had a competitive election here in six years. And I've been up for election five times and only two of those have been competitive. So, elections are a good thing. And I, you know, I lost one. So, I, you know, I don't know if I learned anything from that loss. You know, sometimes you just lose, right?
You learned you needed two more people.
That's right. You needed two more votes. That's right. That's what I learned. So, to speak to the particular individuals, I mean, I, and the decision that we have before us, as Alder Wood said, any of these three individuals that are currently nominated, I feel complete confidence will serve the city well. And I'm sure there are a few other people that aren't on that list of three that also would make our city proud. We have to winnow down, and ultimately, there's going to be one person standing at the end of this process. But I asked myself the question as I was going through all this information and tried to get back to each person that reached out to me and wanted to talk, you know, who, who might do the best job, given what we know? You know, I will divulge here publicly, there's really only one person in this entire list that I really know pretty well, and that's Mark Buffett. You know, Mark has been a friend of mine for many years. I love Mark. He'd make a great alder. You know, I've gotten to know just ever so briefly Molly and Jennifer. And I, I think that they bring an incredible energy and enthusiasm for governance that I think we desperately need. So, you know, these are different boxes we check off to try to figure out who, who's the person that I'm going to give that first vote to. You know, for me, the things that I was looking at, you know, one, one thing that really weighed critically for me in this decision, and hopefully, I'm making the right assessment here, for me, the, you know, which individuals have made an effort to get involved in local government, you know? And that was a really important issue for me. If all other things were equal, there are a lot of things that are unknowable to us about each of you. But if I see that you've been trying to serve this city, to try to get on committees, to think about running for the council, that's really important to me. So, that, that weighed heavily on my decision. And, you know, I, I think the resumes of the, of the three individuals before us are all very strong in being involved in public service. I will say that for me, some of the particular duties that Jennifer Kerr has had with respect to grant applications and dealing with city issues is, I find that very compelling. I find that something that, you know, we, we would benefit from that. You know, that's something that I'm not sure, you know, we, we have right now on the council. But, you know, we're all going to find certain things that we focus on and think that that might be the, that extra little special thing. But I look forward to welcoming whoever is standing tonight at the end of this process. And thanks again for your enthusiasm. And I know that a number of you have put in applications since this all started to get on committees. And, and we want you on committees. And we, we need to keep our committees fresh and, and vital. So, again, whatever happens tonight, stay active, stay involved. We, we need you. So, thanks.
Anyone from this end of the table?
All right. So, I'll say my piece. So, I won't necessarily echo everything that was said, because I'll try to keep it short. But I do want to make one statement kind of for public record, for the future. You know, there were some comments made last meeting about a preference for somebody that's not running or somebody that has the experience. And I would say, if we go through this process at all ever in the future, that I would hope that the council, whoever it is at that time, makes that explicitly stated. I felt a little put off by, or that we kind of hoodwinked people to apply and then all of a sudden, that night saying, you know, thank you very much, but we're going to go with somebody who has been on the council. And I've shared that opinion with a number of you already. So, I just wanted to say that more publicly for whoever reads the minutes in 20 years from now when they're dealing with this topic. So, yeah. So, I'm happy with, you know, the three nominations. They're the three individuals that also reached out to me, and I, I think I had good discussions with each of them. I hope that they didn't feel like it was a waste of time. You know, to echo again, another thing Chad said was, you know, I look forward to seeing your name on the ballot in the spring, you know, whether I run or not. You know, that's what good government is. And I've often, and hopefully, any individual that goes into office, you know, I've often, I went in running thinking, you know, I'm going to do the best job I can. And if somebody else comes along, has better ideas, and people like them, and I get voted out, that's fine too. Because, you know, that's what government is, and that's how awesome cities happen. So, you know, I look forward to seeing everybody's name on the ballot in the spring. So, again, you know, again, echoing everybody's comments, one reason Molly was in my purview a little bit was, you know, as benign as the question may have seemed with asking what committees people wanted to pick, it was interesting her response about senior committee, or senior commissioner, senior citizens committee and the facilities. And I thought that immediately kind of rose to the top of my mind. And as well as in our further discussions, knowing that she's really interested in communications and trying to work on communications with the city, to the citizens, I think that's something I've tried to do a little bit of, but probably haven't not, I grade myself, I think I told you, a C minus or a C plus or somewhere around there on that. You know, Facebook just isn't as active as I want it to be, I guess. So, anyways, that said, you know, the other three, or the other two candidates really had their benefits, and I really enjoyed their experiences that they brought to the table. And, you know, I'd be happy with any of those. But, you know, I just wanted to say, that's why she kind of rose to the, to the, a little bit to the top there. But that's all I got now.
Okay. Anyone else?
You know, I would just echo what both Chad and Andrew said in, in terms of the quality, everybody, everybody that applied and that it was really hard to think through. And, you know, there's a part of me that says, you know, wants to ask Attorney Cole if maybe we could change the procedure and just let Mary pick.[1193.11][1193.11](laughter)
I'm sure she would love that.
Yeah, sure.
No. But, but beyond that, I really am appreciative of everybody that applied, everybody that took the time to present, to fill out the applications. And I, I would also echo that I think the three that have been chosen, I know I found their responses to be very thoughtful in the application as well as the presentations. And some of you know that San Damiano in particular is, is a concern, potential concern for the city. And certainly, high on my list is one of the things that we need to be attentive to, which is one of the reasons why I'm supportive of Mark's candidacy. But, but again, I think everybody here would make an outstanding alder, and I look, look forward to serving with whoever's chosen.
Alder Holmquist?
First off, thanks for staying, and sorry about the delay in me being here tonight. I want to respond to Alder Kitzler's comment regarding the possibility of hoodwinked. I think that was the term. So, I'm sure there's a definition somewhere. I'll skip that. And I think it goes to the part of, I'm not sure we were expecting the turnout that we received. And I think it would be unfair for me to, to not say that I still support that position, because I do. That having candidates from an uncontested election just a relatively short period of time prior to the call out and have that level of response took me back a bit. And with that, made me really consider, you know, this is, this is a piece that I see as opportunistic rather than a part of a bigger, a bigger piece of how wanting to be connected, how wanting to be involved. I was one of, I was intending to nominate Kathy, and given the changes, I was then planning and continued to not necessarily nominate anyone for from that slate. Although, after the slate was made by my colleagues here, these were actually the three that, if the original grouping, I thought rose to the top in a variety of areas despite, actually, every applicant, I think, having a lot to contribute to the city in many different ways. These three individuals, I think, have some amazing things to offer us. And regardless of what happens tonight, I encourage you to get involved. That's all I raise as that. I don't want to beat that, beat that horse anymore. So, thank you.
Alder Spate?
I wanted to add just one more comment about the issue of, you know, whether or not someone has served on the council before or not. And I think, because I, I let it be known two weeks ago that I was very much on the fence about, you know, what made sense. And the thing that is challenging for us tonight, and why I said initially, it's been so hard to do this, if, if we had before us two or three people who had previously been on the council, those are people that the voters at one time or another had said, okay, we'll let you be on the council. And so, that, that's part of where that comes from, is that, you know, for those of us up here having to make this decision, at least we are picking out of a pool of folks that have kind of run that gauntlet once. And obviously, the experience piece is a really important part of that, too. But that's all that, that's where that's coming from. I mean, I don't think there's anyone on this council that believes that we don't want new people in government, you know, and that this is a, you know, the, the old boys' club or something. Quite to the contrary, I think there's a passion right now on this council, no matter what our age, for people that are bringing in new ideas and vitality, no matter what your age is as you come before us here. But I, I think that's in, you know, not to put any words in Alder Holmquist's mouth, but I mean, he and I were having the same struggle, and I know others here were having that struggle. You know, it's really, we really felt like, you know, were there a couple of those individuals before us who had been on the council before, I would have felt more obliged to go that path. You know, as we were before you two weeks ago, we only had one person. And I was as uncomfortable with just anointing one person, even though that issue was there. So, I just wanted to say that, to clarify what I was thinking. I mean, I hope that city government and our committees are always seeking out fresh ideas, which is precisely why I raised the issue of committee appointments tonight. I mean, I just, that we, we benefit from your active involvement. And I'll stop blathering on.
Anybody else? I guess I'll just take these in the order they were nominated. Does that make sense?
Well, I think you can just call the roll, Mayor, and each alder can state who they would.
And just say which one. Okay. Well, that makes sense. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Jennifer Kerr.
Alder Spate.
Jennifer Kerr.
Alder Moore.
Mark Buffett.
Alder Kitzler.
Molly Groupie.
Alder Holmquist.
Molly Groupie.
We have two for Ms. Groupie, two for Ms. Kerr, one for Mr. Buffett.
Okay. So, now, according to what we talked about last week, the top two proceed to round two of the voting. We've got some time here for discussion. If anyone has anything further to say? Apparently not.
I would just, well, I was just going to say that I would be remiss in not sharing that, that I think it's a good thing that we will add another woman to the, to the council.
Anyone else? Will the clerk please call the roll again?
And just so there's no misunderstanding, it's between Ms. Groupie and Ms. Kerr.
Correct.
All right. Alder Holmquist?
Molly Groupie.
Alder Wood?
Jennifer Kerr.
Alder Spate?
Jennifer Kerr.
Alder Moore?
Jennifer Kerr.
Alder Kitzler.
Molly Groupie.
We have three for Ms. Kerr and two for Ms. Groupie.
It looks like Ms. Kerr is our new alderperson. Congratulations.[1697.21][1697.21](applause) And thank all of you again for the time and effort you took in making your applications, meeting with people, coming and making appearance last week. It's, it's much appreciated. And I will just repeat what everyone else repeated, please be sure to apply for some committees and run next year if you're still interested. I think we've pretty much covered, well, we will do the swearing in at the, as the very last thing. The only thing we have left is reports of committees, commissions, boards. So, does anyone, I guess, have anything to report? Alderman Moore?
No.
Alder Kitzler?
Nothing to report.
Alder Holmquist?
Plant commission scheduled for next week is canceled due to no pressing agenda items for that, that meeting.
Ald, oh, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Spate?
No report.
City Clerk Andrews?
Liquor licenses will be reviewed here at the city council on June 5th, all of the renewals. And board of review is May 31st. And do remember that if you do want to contest your assessment, you have to get in your objection form within the first two hours of the board of review. But your intent to object needs to be received 48 hours prior to board of review, and that is on a holiday. The holiday doesn't matter. So, do you- So do need to get that.
City Attorney Cole, did you have anything?
No report.
City Administrator Little?
The mural dedication will be June 10th, and it will feature entertainment by the Ho-Chunk Nation dancers and singers. So I think it'll actually be a pretty good time. Council computers are ready for pickup if you want to stop in the office. We can help you with that, crash course on how to use them. And I just wanted to point out, WVMO, if you saw on your packet, took home six awards at the Wisconsin Broadcasters Association, 2017 Broadcasting Awards. And what's really cool about this is they were competing in the large market category, which includes Madison and Milwaukee large stations. So that's a pretty good showing for a one-year-old radio station, so kudos to them.
Finally, I would like to thank the council and city staff for the help with this appointment process. I know several people put in quite a bit of time, so thank you very much. And the last thing would be the Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, May 29th at 10:00 PM. I think most, or 10:00 AM, during, not PM.
I think that's Marty Rock.
Exactly, Marty, right. And I think several people here are riding in the parade, so. I guess the only thing left on the agenda is swearing-in our newly-appointed alderperson. So Jennifer, would you like to come to the front? And City Clerk Andrews will take you through the part of the process. Is that correct, John?
Yes. Hi, if you'd like to just stand here, because you're swearing to the flag.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry that your back will be to the people.
You can have her come around here if you want.
Should we do that, do you think?
Sure, why don't you, you want to come around?
Please have flag and raise your hand. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, Jennifer Kerr, who have been appointed to the Office of Interim Alder Person in the city of Manona, in Dane County, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So let me go.
Okay, I think that takes care of our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Look to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned.